Thank you. I'm going to ask Councilman Steve Hubbard if he would lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One public hearing scheduled tonight. The purpose is a proposed amendment to Chapter forty-two zoning of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to the rules of governance of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Biggs, is that yours? Is that Steve or...?
No, that's Andrew.
This will be brief. This ordinance really is to update our ordinance to make it consistent with state code changes that happened in 2015 regarding the duties and powers of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Basically, the General Assembly changed the regulations governing the Board of Zoning Appeals groups across the state in really two areas. One was they changed how a board is to look at a variance. They have made it easier in a way if the board would choose to look at it that way to grant a variance, so they've eased up the standards in a way. And so if a board would choose to want to go down that road to grant a variance, it was very hard to meet the standards before for variance. The other way that they did change the regulations where they implemented some rules on ex parte communications to clarify how information is to be shared between staff and the applicant and the Board of Zoning Appeals members. Basically, it's how we perceive today, so it's really not a change for us. We have also taken this opportunity to update our code to reflect our current practice. In one way, the state code allows for a secretary to be elected from the Board of Zoning Appeals. That is a practice that we have been carrying out for some time now. So this ordinance would codify that into our local ordinance. And our current secretary for Board of Zoning Appeals is Stacy Moore. And the other change is that it would allow the council, if they choose to do so in the future, to appoint alternate members. So this is not a practice that we do today, but it does allow the council looking forward and to adopt that practice if they'd like. It would be up to three alternate members. It's a five, as you know, it's a five-member board. And the alternate members allows staff to call those members if we know a city member is not going to be present at the meeting. So it provides that flexibility to make sure we have a four and hopefully make sure we have five people there because it is always going to be a majority of the membership for a primary election. And so the planning commission has reviewed this and documented approval. We've also taken it to the Board of Zoning Appeals and discussed the changes with them at their office board meeting. So that really improved my remarks. So we have any questions?
Has there been a situation where the five BCA members, or is it a recurrent issue that all five are not present, where all of a sudden now you have four members present where you can have a split vote or...?
The three meetings that we've had since I've been on board, we have not had five members present.
On any of the meetings?
On any of the meetings.
And as far as the... Yes, I think having all of us is a great idea. I mean, it'd make perfect sense. I think I read where they would each serve a five-year term, correct? Now presently, the BCA members are staggered, is that right? They serve a five-year term, but they're staggered terms, is that right?
Yes.
So would it make sense for us as a group? Do we have to have these, by the way, these individuals confirmed to the Circuit Court or is this just people we would choose or recommend to the Circuit Court?
We would recommend them to the Circuit Courts.
Okay.
With the same practice as the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. If we did that, would it make sense, by any of the... That we would recommend in staggered terms as well? Where we recommend one this year to serve a five-year term, recommend one next year to serve a five-year term, and maybe the way to recommend another? You're not recommending we look at three people right now for five-year terms? We have to replace alternates at the same time? Any particular way we should go about that or if we look at that?
I really don't have a recommendation on that. I think it would be council's purview.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it could be three members, it could be two members that would provide that ability to have a full membership of five.
And the planning commission, was your unanimous correct in requesting this?
They are correct.
Last question I want to ask you, and I hate to get, and I might come try to get too technical with this, but that forty-two point five seven two, that's the ex parte communications. I'll be honest with you, I kept reading it and I kept trying to figure out, I mean, it seems like this is a standard practice that you can't have a substantive discussion with a board member about any facts or law relevant to the case at hand, correct? We're just simply codifying the state standard now as our own, correct? I adopted their language directly.
Correct. I think that there were some abuses or perceptions of abuse in different parts of the state and therefore, General Assembly wanted to codify this, but it's, to my knowledge, it's never been a practice here or an issue here.
And that term, that ex parte, that's the General Assembly's using that term in regards to forty-two.
Yes, and we, Theresa and I discussed it. We decided that it would be best to put that full section into our code so it's clear.
Okay.
But it is, you codified the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I know that the planning commission keeps track of attendance and if somebody doesn't show up a lot, they take some action, you know, because people do try to get them done. It's my opinion, if we can't get five members to be at these meetings, we need to replace these five members. I think alternatives, the alters are great. But my point is if these people want to be a part of it, they got to be there.
Maybe I can ask a question in regards to what Mr. Collins has mentioned. And as far as the membership, how many meetings? I've been trying to think how long, you've been with our town, we've been lucky enough to have you for, I don't know how long now.
So over my six-month tenure, we've had three meetings.
So three meetings, and none of the three meetings have had five BCA members? Have, they all had four BCA members present?
One had three members present.
We can't remove people.
No.
No, and it hasn't been the same members. I wouldn't say that it's really a systemic issue with, you know, with a particular member. It's just one of those things that, you know, they are not consistent. So when they do come up, you know, I think life gets in the way for one or two members.
How much notice does he have on a BCA appeal?
Typically, three to four weeks.
No.
At least one of his absences was for surgery.
So...
Yes, that's a good point. I mean, we have, we have at least one for medical.
That's the rationale for all of them, several. Makes sense.
And one last question for the mayor and Andrew. Mr. Warren, now, this isn't on our agenda to act on tonight.
Yeah.
And is it going to be on the next agenda? I guess it would be. Yeah. If we can get off our plate tonight, I'm comfortable taking action when I get this council's pleasure. Because I know you're saying I can't do that. Do that in a formal way. I don't know if it's appropriate to bring that up.
After I finish the hearing.
I'll wait till after I finish the hearing. I want to ask a question.
We have not had any public comment at the public hearing for the planning commission. So I don't have any public comment from any of the public hearing process today to bring forward.
There has been a public hearing on this.
There has been.
Very good. And maybe I'll contribute one last question. And thus far, everything you're asking must be codified tonight will bring us to number one within the state parameters. Number two, it's nothing we're already doing exactly the opposite, correct? And it just basically codifies our ability to have a secretary.
Yes.
Okay.
But in regards to our own attendance policy, item C, members may be removed for cause by the appointing authority upon written charges after a public hearing. What exactly would that entail? Like if somebody doesn't show up for five meetings, can we take action to...?
I certainly think we have that option.
Go public hearing or the authority has to write, has to put it in writing, present it to a member or what?
Fortunately, I haven't had to come against that quite yet. I'm not even looking to, you know, on that procedure.
The only way we can do it would be, Circuit Court would have to remove it. We would just have to make the request, I think. I don't think we could remove them at all. We're not, we don't.
I would usually, the way they are appointed is the way you have to move them. But I've never come across the issue either, so I would also have to look at it.
Well, and being that we don't have a scheduled meeting every month or every quarter, is that correct? It's on a managed basis. That's right. I think in other commissions and committees and planning commissions, I think there is, prior to that final step of removal, there has been a letter in counseling with the mayor that particular person basically found to get with the program. And at that point, if that, if it continues, then I think after we've given them due notice, we can proceed with whatever we want to do.
I think as well, in our purview request for the attendance, when we come back to recommending to be reappointed.
Sure.
Have you had a discussion with any members about the attendance policy and how it works and how, you know, we depend on them being there? Has there ever been opportunity when we've got them all together and just talk about it now?
Not to date.
Do you think that would be an idea?
Certainly put that on the agenda for future meetings. We do not have a meeting scheduled at this time since there's not a case.
Okay.
There's not a case kind of.
There's certainly nothing would lead you from sending a, an email or a document to each member expressing the need to be consistent in their attendance. That's what I would, I think I have to do, and I'd be six months, but we have none of it, hopefully. All right. Any other questions from council? Is there anyone? I'm sorry.
I guess this is not a good time, but I would support Mr. Stigson and his recommendation. Maybe that will come up later if it needs to be.
We'll get into it.
Okay.
All right. No one else to address this issue? Thank you. I'm going to call a regular meeting to order. The first item of the agenda is consent agenda. This is council meeting minutes of August the ninth, two thousand sixteen, and the monthly bills.
And Mr. Mayor, prior to me requesting that we approve that, there's one small correction I think we need to put on the minutes. No offense at all, this was a convoluted issue, but it's on page three and it's under the safe zone, it's under the third line. And, you know, I likely, probably my fault, I misspoke, says, in domestic violence mini grants were available to produce, provide funding? They might be. It's a domestic violence mini grants may be available. We requested that from the state to look into it, but we haven't even defended it with positive yet. And if we could just change the word "were" to "may be," that's the only thing. I just took one of Mrs. Lee's, and I guess it's my fault, I'm sure Mr. Stigson, I probably supposed to say that. I'd move away from the consent agenda with that modification.
Thank you. Second. Motion of the second. Attorney, are you in a position to poll the group?
Dr. McMicha?
Aye.
Dr. McCallum?
Aye.
Dr. McCullough?
Aye.
Dr. McCutler?
Aye.
Dr. McShulman?
Aye.
Dr. Sides?
Aye. Move this six A. This would be an awful good time to, somebody suggested we want to move the hearing deck a motion that we take action tonight on the public hearing item for revising our zoning ordinance with regards to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Attorney.
Please. Dr. McMicha?
Aye.
Dr. McCallum?
Aye.
Dr. McCullough?
Aye.
Dr. McCutler?
Aye.
Dr. McShulman?
Aye.
Dr. Sides?
Aye. Six A, thank you. We will have that as item three A after the proposed lease agreement for location of communications to sell is the law. There are no recognitions tonight that I'm aware of. We'll move on. Citizens' hearing, this is where we invite the public to speak on matters that have concern to them or they'd like to bring to the attention of the council. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Hearing ended. I will close the citizens' comments portion. Under staff reports, and I'm assuming this is the, really a continuation of the next item down, that's the Police Department and Urban Development Access Plan. Does that make sense?
We have individual staff reports, we have presentations of the two items there.
Okay.
Item six one, or the I-one, would be by our consultant.
So we will, if there are no other staff reports scheduled or other staff members willing to address council, then we will move into introductions and presentations. Presentation of Urban Development Areas Plan. Mr. Warren, I guess that's yours with the lead in to our consultant.
I'd just like to present Shashi Kalbagh from Michael Baker International. And we've been working together since I've been on board and Shashi's been working with our team with our staff for over a year now. And so we're happy to be at this point to bring you the jobs of the Urban Development Areas Plan.
We'll look to the logs. Don't let them move the cameras in the action.
Mr. Mayor and Town Council, thank you for, thank you very much for having me on your agenda tonight. I will make a very brief presentation about the progress on the Urban Development Area Grants. I'll give you a really quick background of what Urban Development Area Grants are, or we're going to call them UDAs for short. Talk about the process, how we created these boundaries, and analysis if there's enough area to accommodate growth in the town of Christiansburg for the next twenty years. And then talk about, show you some images about what a UDA can look like. So with that, Urban Development Area Grants for UDAs are areas basically designated by locality in your comprehensive plan with targeted growth, where you promote targeted growth in these areas. Essentially, it improves the eligibility for funding under Houseville Tours called Smartsdale from VDOT. This is facilitated by a contract from VDOT and with Michael Baker. The money goes directly to them to us and is approved each task by the town staff. So there's no money extended on the town, and the town isn't extending money on this area. One of the things about UDAs is that you're designing areas that are close in proximity to transportation facilities, have available infrastructure, and they have a close proximity to developed areas. The benefit of this is that you're protecting suburban areas or rural areas and you're prioritizing growth where growth can be accommodated essentially. We thought we would take this more than, essentially, you're creating a map with a boundary on it and you're adopting your comprehensive plan, but we thought we would create some, what is the vision of these UDAs, and create some 3D models just to show you what it might look like. We also developed some design guidelines that you can use for future updates here in zoning code. We'll show you what that looks like. In the process, each task that we created was augmented with a site visit and presentation to the planning commission as information alight. Our first task was a reconnaissance and kickoff meeting. Us and the town staff did a reconnaissance of all the areas around Christiansburg, got a good idea of what are the priorities. The second task is that we looked at the boundaries itself. We analyzed the boundaries, we looked at different configurations based on availability of infrastructure and other things. Then we created goals and policies, what can go in, what should occur within these UDAs? What are the goals of these UDAs? What's the vision that would occur within these UDAs? And the last task was the Congress of Plan Amendment. On June twentieth, we did a workshop session with the planning commission and we did an open house and we got additional comments who were able to create a draft report for you. So our first meeting occurred in September and, you know, one of the key issues, and early on, it was very apparent to us that we need to have a big picture vision of what occurs within these UDAs and these promoted as growth areas here. How would you bring people to downtown? Where are we going to be in five years? Walkability was very important, especially in the mall area where it's very difficult to walk between large parcels, connections to restaurants and schools, protecting the residential neighborhood and Cambridge. These are some of the things that we heard and we thought we should reflect in the process and reflect in the plan. We thought it was very important to look at the previous work of the town, starting with the comprehensive plan, making sure we reflect those goals. More importantly, the town council vision of 2020 and some of the, some of the other plans that we've done in the past. Comprehensive plan is very important to us because it sets a trajectory where the town wants to go. We use the population growth here that was provided by Census two thousand ten to see how much growth is going to occur in twenty years and then to ask the question, can these UDAs accommodate that growth? The Vision 2020 was a very important document to us because it basically says, we need to be a sound financial entity and we need to have, be a model for efficient land use. So therefore, these UDAs have to encapsulate those big ideas there. Developing the UDA banner is in its own policy. So in developing these UDAs, a couple of things we start off with is first, we look at acreage of these UDAs and look at what's developmental there and then look at the utility services and see if there's infrastructure capacity for that growth in those boundaries. We then look at land use patterns and see, and see whether the opportunities there, is new development that's occurring? Is there existing development that you can put new development adjacent to? Is there revitalization or redevelopment effort underway that downtowns and the street state improvements that we can leverage? And then lastly, is to land with the town's goals and policies, especially some of the existing assets like the Huckleberry Trails, a very important element that you invested in and to see if you can, we can leverage that for potential development. And lastly, most importantly, direction input from staff, stakeholders, residents, the guidance for this process. So starting this, if this is your future land use plan, and the idea is to protect those yellow areas, the residential areas. And so through our process, this is what it looks like if we were to map the boundaries that we came up with. They're primarily on the darker areas, which are the mixed-use business commercial zoning areas. So we really stay away from the residential rural areas and focusing on the more intensive areas. And so the four areas are as follows, the Cambridge area along Cambridge is downtown. Three is called Institute. Originally, three and four, which is the mall area, where one of them broke and was half in late December of twenty twenty-three. So the first one is Cambridge, it's about forty-one point nine acres. And it's, we, these goals are basically, well, what happens in the next twenty years? What do you have in place to guide that type of development? We thought it was very important to have a specific plan for these areas that has the street state plan in component. There are portions of the sidewalks that's missing, there needs to be a consistency there. Very importantly, we're referencing one of the planning commission presentations about allowing for adaptive reuse of redevelopment of structures along Cambridge Street while protecting the neighborhood. And also avoiding parking impacts to the neighborhood is very important. That can be done through many types of devices like a parking management plan for that effect. The downtowns will be here a lot as well, redevelopment downtown. Again, a specific plan or a street skate plan, I should note that you have a street skate plan in place that's currently under disruption.
I don't mean to interrupt you. Sure. Could you go back one side? I just want to see what was mapped out as constituted the downtown areas. How many acres that was?
This is one hundred and one.
Ninety-one acres downtown, okay. Thank you.
And then also looking at, you know, we talk a lot about, how do you incentivize, when you redevelop with the downtown, how do you incentivize that? One thing we thought would be interesting is to study in the special service district, just to mean a couple of things. We talked more about it in the Q and A session. We could look at taxes and then financing in the downtown. It could be a business improvement district, a lot of different things, but we thought it's something to consider if you're going to incentivize it, the roadway improvements to be part of that growth essentially, are tied to growth. And lastly, in the meantime, is to promote downtown as an event center, promote the arts, is what we heard on one of our last meetings. The Institute, this is what was originally part of the mall area, but we broke it off because the land use pattern is very different here. It's primarily Franklin Street with a lot of institutional use, school uses. Again, a street skate plan, if you walk, you walk up and down it, there are missing portions of the sidewalk, there needs to be a plan for street skates and safety, really linking the residential developments to the west of Christiansburg, residential developments to the west to Christiansburg High School, the rec center, for example, and promoting connectivity to the Huckleberry Trail, that's going to be extended through there. Very important. The Mall UDA, this is a very interesting, there's a lot of development area in the Mall UDA. I thought I'd just put this up here on the screen to show you, here's the mall, it's literally five miles from Blacksburg, it's close enough to, grown up into Radford, it has a real regional impact. I was just there before I came to this, this presentation, driving around, it is a regional destination and that, that provides a lot of interesting concepts for growth there. The growth in the Mall UDA will be very different relative to downtown. We'll talk about that. What the Mall UDA needs though, from our viewpoint, is a master plan and that master plan needs to address tenant tenant between the blocks, it's very difficult to move between those blocks. Another thing you're seeing in a lot of these types of areas, we have original shopping malls, is the inclusion of housing adjacent to shopping. Shopping is changing because of e-commerce, so residential comes in and it creates a different dynamic. We have some models we want to show you what that looks like. And also, what we heard was supporting the possibility of developing a transit center can be very interesting because they're so close to highway access, that's an ideal location for something that, and again, that could leverage housing next to a transit center. So now the question is, what is the capacity for...
Would you go back to the last one you said, development of the motion of the marketplace?
Yeah, the market, the utilization of the marketplace shopping center was something that came up and to see how you can promote that.
All right, then that's our job. Did you have any ideas?
We do have some ideas. Check some images.
Glad you're on, okay.
So now the question is, with these UDAs, can it accommodate growth in the next ten twenty years? The key answer is yes, it can, there's more than enough growth. There's, there's a lot of area, and I think there's about two, three times as much area than the growth. So the starting point again is the comprehensive plan in the Census two thousand ten. We did an estimate what the population is for two thousand fifteen based on building permits, and then we use the numbers provided in the comprehensive plan. Essentially, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand thirty, these are projections, the town grew by about five thousand people roughly. So can you accommodate five thousand people? That's the question. So each of the areas, if you add up all the acres for each of the UDAs, it's about thirteen hundred seventy-six acres. But of those acres, about four hundred and forty, you can actually develop because there's already footprints of development there. So the opportunity acres are green parcels, meaning that they're undeveloped, underutilized. If you restrike the parking lot, can you get additional development there? About four hundred and forty acres. The next step is to look at your zoning, your current zoning in place. So we took your current zoning, did various options using the existing zoning, or maybe, say townhouses, multifamily, you know, different scenarios. Your required acres from one hundred sixty-seven up to two thirty-two is plenty that would fit into four hundred. We'll, we can talk more about those details there, but there's enough land on how they grow in the next twenty years, about two times. Now that we determined that you have enough development capacity, this now raises the question, what is that going to look like? What do you want the town to look like in twenty years? What is it, what, it wants to be an exciting destination? It wants to be a place where you can walk, it wants to be a place where you can play. So what we're offering in part is, right, is traditional neighborhood design guidelines. These are principles intended to guide potential zoning updates in the future. Instead of going through each of the guidelines, so it's better to show images because they tell the story better than words can. This is the town of Christiansburg on Main Street, and this is what traditional neighborhood design looks like. Compact, the structures come closer to the street, they're articulated, they're interesting, there's active uses at the base, the corners are articulated, there's landmark buildings like the churches in the background there. This is traditional neighborhood design. You know, this is a great example. You know, so again, it's sidewalks with active uses, seeding, street trees, consistent outdoor cafes, where it makes sense obviously, where the land uses are supported. The adaptive reuse of buildings leading to allow residential and commercial at the bottom, where, you know, again, where the structures allow that to occur. And then it's the complete streets, it's striped crosswalks, being able to cross the street, consistent sidewalks, where you can accommodate bicycle lanes, that's great. You know, so that's what a complete street looks like. Now lastly is community identification. This is more just a sign on a pole, this is really identifying your neighborhood, it's identifying the entry into your town, the entry of the downtown, identifying the historic district of Cambridge, the historic district of the downtown. This is very important from a branding standpoint, I believe. So we took all this and we thought, let's, let's do some 3D modeling to see what this potential would look like. Here's the mall, the UDA, here's the New River Shopping Center. And as I was saying, a lot of these shopping centers that we're seeing now, they're overparked in some places and you can really, you can add residential and make it a very interesting place. There's the Huckleberry Trail, which is a great amenity. So what if you add housing in the perimeters as entries, as promenades into the entry of the mall while maintaining existing parking around the perimeter? So what would it look like? So here's again, adjacent to the Huckleberry Trail, dislining it and having parking behind it, having a promenade that leads into the Huckleberry Trail from the mall with residential above. I mean, so this is some ideas that you can do. There are examples like this that old, older malls get redeveloped and they're added with residential and shopping. Again, adjacent to the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond store, there's a lot of underutilized land that would be ideal for housing, where you can, where you can place it. Again, another promenade type of entry into the mall. Here's the downtown. Here's the downtown. Again, you see the parking, taking the majority of land uses. What if you were to develop this parcel? This is the main street looking south, I think south is going up there. And hip hop over there. And you put the development closer to the street, have the parking tucked inside. That's what it would look like. So, development comes to the edge, parking's interiors, you're not looking at parking, parking's tucked in the back. You see, there's many examples like that. Here's another angle. And then, you know, when you get into the downtown gateways or how structures set back, how there's some plaza spaces that kind of say your entry in the downtown is important, that you're in a very interesting, exciting place. Another example here, what if we just looked at this block and thought, well, how does it develop? It's a very large block and there's actually a street called Commerce Street that biceps it. What if you were to develop that street into an orderly development pattern? So, there it is. A first stage can probably define an edge. And this is all conceptual, by the way. This is showing what it might look like. Defining the edges is very important to a block and then ways to get through the block. And then slowly, as the surface parking starts to go to development, at some point in the downtown, you have to look at the structure parking, in the far future, obviously. And again, the full block develops over the next 20 years. That's what it might look like. You might be able to have pedestrian passeos or plazas within the block to easily cross through the block, for example. And here's downtown in 20 years, concept, it's a concept, what it might look like. Development that lines the perimeter of the block, gateway nodes, plazas, it could be, you know, there's a lot of possibility. And that would, you know, here's obviously a close-up shot of what it might look like. So, with that, I'll take any comments you have. This is information only.
We've worked together for several months now and again, I've done just a great job. One thing that I hadn't considered until just recently is the schools. And as we grow, the schools have to keep up with the town. Have you guys ever looked at that or?
Um, not specifically.
Or is that a separate study or?
Yeah, not specifically. I mean, a lot of the, you know, the graphics we're showing you is that we thought we would include that just to illustrate what these things, as marketing material for the town that could be possibly used. We don't get into the analysis of school and the impact, development impacts on schools. But that would be obviously a second phase of what we're doing.
The, how, I mean, do you all have a, I guess in the work that you've done before with other localities in this regard, I mean, the images look great. You all would love to see your revitalization, will I, to give the catchphrase for me, and all these particular areas, certainly out of the mall and things that we can do out there. But, having a conceptual plan like this, I guess, how useful is that or how will we be able to use that to spur economic infusion of capital? I mean, if someone wanted to come into the area, I mean, is there, is that part of the plan or part of the comprehensive approach?
What, for each of these UDAs, especially the downtown, it's important to have a plan, if you will, in place. And that plan can start with just promoting it, the downtown as an arts district or an event center, which I believe you do currently. But having a plan that says, this is what it can look like, you know, you have street skate improvements currently underway, so you have that in place, you can expand those street skate improvements, include all the downtown. So, if I'm going to build the downtown, what do I build for my sidewalks? And the person next to me is building something adjacent to me, we should be playing, we should be building in the same book essentially, so we put the same street skate improvements in and you have a consistent pattern of offside improvements.
I guess the pattern I'm looking for then is when we're doing that connectivity, which is key, obviously.
Correct.
So, when we're enhancing our, the walkability and the connectivity of our downtown, is it your practice or I guess in your experience that that drives in fact the development or that drives the investment into the downtown area, private outside?
Yeah, having a plan with a vision in place that the community has bought into. So, when you propose something, you're playing off that, you're using that book to promote your, to get your development is important because it's already had, it has this community support. Having incentives in place is very important as well, especially if you want to bring people there. That's what we talked about, the special service district. It's something you would have to study.
Well, I like the way you're doing it because it makes it to each point a destination. And that's what we're trying to, that's our overall vision, I believe, with the areas, is to make people want to come there, what we do to drive that.
There are many cities that, who have downtowns that, you know, that dissipated and then it came back. And that was the first step is to promote it with the arts as events, nonprofits, bringing arts to the downtown, promoting events. So, people go, that's a place where I can go. And then development will come and people are going there. So, that's always the first step. And then having a plan in place, having a street skate plan in place, having an incentive package in place is great. I think the downtown, the mall works for that very well.
I would already talked about this once I was the planning commission, but I want these fellows to, you know, to, the first step to redo our West Main Street, East Main Street there is to get apartments, rental apartments, and they're right, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean.
Don't be so jealous.
What's very interesting, and I should have indicated this earlier, in one of our meetings, someone asked, what's one of the great things with the town of Christiansburg? And I think it's the affordability and that you have land that to build. You're right next to Blacksburg, you're pretty close to Rennett, but it's very affordable to build here and you can build a lot of housing here. And your projections, town projections are pretty robust, you know, 5,000 people. So, that's, that's a great thing. So, if you can target that and say, as a town, I'm going to follow that targeted growth, protecting our rural areas and suburban areas with future capital improvement investments, you know, all of a sudden, you're, you have a trajectory that you're going upon.
Thank you.
One comment, I was very interested in how you said you approached, you looked at our comprehensive plan first and I was sort of interested if you were going to be doing a blind taste test, so to speak, looking at UDAs in context of what you said, available land and available infrastructure and so forth. But, since you did it that way, which is great, did you stumble across any macro observations about where we have land growth versus what you would think in your expertise is?
Well, it's interesting because we looked at the future land use map. It was pretty easy for us because we just, we used that to help us and start it, if you will. And then we kind of tweaked the boundaries a little bit, you know, and then we looked at individual properties. We did a very detailed analysis with staff, seeing what are the opportunities in each of these UDAs. So, that, you know, I think the future land use map was very helpful in defining it.
So, you use that as a starting point rather than looking at where you thought or, you know, where your group thought that UDAs might be logical in that area?
But I, the, it was starting point, but it was a good starting point because the mall is a very unique place, it's a different development pattern. Downtown's a very unique place as well. Cambria is interesting because you're dealing with just that street and that curve there and that's, that's unique, but it's historic and it's a very unique. The Institute was, it was interesting because it's really a street skate plan at the end of the day. You have a lot of institutional uses there, but it's something that would occur. And then you have, you know, there's a lot of interesting things you can do there. But each of the UDAs are very different, I think, from a, just from a development standpoint. Mall being, you know, a much larger area to develop and the downtown being a very unique event center.
Well, rephrase the question very briefly. Is there any logical or any critique of where we're headed with our future land use plan that you stumbled across?
Um, no, I would, no, I think my main thing, you know, is the mall area has a lot of area, I mean, there's a lot of, because you have accessibility to it, it is a very unique opportunity to build. Same time, downtown is, you know, it's a different development pattern. In some ways, it's challenging because it's infill development primarily. And I think the town will have to be more involved in that, just from my experience, especially when you're dealing with infill development and bringing someone to that place. So, those are the two areas that stuck out for me.
Exactly. Nice presentation.
You said something at the beginning about the marketplace. Do you have anything else to say about it?
Um, you know, I think the marketplace, just like the New River, we were deciding which one should be, put some 3D models through. We got the New River Mall because it has Huckleberry Trail adjacent to it. But really, that model adding residential next to a mall can occur there as well. There's a lot of malls that are being redeveloped across the country that are built in 70s and it's the nature of commerce today in some ways. And a lot of the strategy is involved, housing, rental housing as the first step, you know, and I think that's a place that, that would be a, you know, a good step there as well. I mean, you could really take those models and put them on that site and move a few things around and then, you know, accommodate parking and then, you know. But I think the transit idea, like having transit connectivity there is, is also, that's one of the planning commission members, I think, that was a great idea because you've got direct access to the highway there, five minutes away from Blacksburg. Again, and you couple that with housing, transit with housing, student housing, it's a great, great connect dynamic.
So, you're saying maybe convert some or of that mall to residential?
Yeah, or you average.
Apartments or?
With a transit feature?
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. I'm sure that was the appreciated version. I read the link that Amber's going to hand out and it's 50 or 60 pages. That's why I would say you got three minutes. I gave you a break.
Okay.
It's been served.
So, our next step will be to schedule a public hearing to, to adopt a change to our comprehensive plan to include the language for urban development areas that was part of our grant, as we were required to look at that as a comprehensive plan change. So, next week, I'll work with Mr. Davis and we'll schedule a public hearing for the amendment. It'll probably be the second meeting October that we come for you, that would give us enough time to bring it, to schedule the planning commission for our area and have it done. So, that would be the next step.
Very good. Thank you. The next presentation, presentation of the Police Department Annual Report by Mark Sisson. Chief. Can I get one, Mr. John Drake, report?
So, that's the story of my life. I always follow the consultants. So, I'm excited to be here tonight and I appreciate the opportunity. As Police Chief, for the past eight years, I have not been before counsel to talk about our annual report. I have always submitted an annual report to you, but I have not given a specific presentation. So, as I submitted that to Mr. Biggs, he said, that's some outstanding information. I think you need to be before counsel. I said, yes, sir. So, great information. There's some new things in our report this year that we're excited about. We have many new initiatives that we kicked off this year, some of you may know about, some of you may not. So, I want to brief you on some of those. I'll open it up. I will be brief. Any information that's in the document that you review over this week, next week, and specific questions about, I'll be able to answer those through Mr. Biggs.
And everything you're presenting tonight is in here, right?
Yes, sir. And there's, what I present normally is abbreviated, but I will reference some of the information in the annual report. So, I want to talk a little bit about services performed within our station. The one thing that we started doing about four years ago is we started putting our service performed report, which is in your book, on our website. So, if you haven't looked at our website for some time, take a look at that. There's a lot of information on our website, some that we'll talk about later on the internal investigations and some of those statistics. But services performed are on there. We want to be very transparent and open to our community and that's why we put as much as we do out to our community. So, I just want to focus on a few of our crimes over the past year that have reduced, that we're very happy about. Obviously homicides have reduced, assault batteries, shoplifting and larcenies, which in our resident, our commercial district and shopping district, that's something that we do a lot of. Shoplifting and larceny, that's something we handle a lot of. Burglaries are down, weapons violations, motor vehicle thefts are down. There's numerous others in the report that you'll see crimes reducing. You know, I came to you two or three years ago and I asked for a crime prevention officer. I presented information about the number of community events that we do and crime prevention efforts and trainings. I needed them. I needed that extra body. And we'll talk a little bit about vision and philosophy change a little. I know we haven't spoke about this, so I hope tonight we do the best night to talk about it. And it's talking about crime prevention and traffic work. You'll see, I put up traffic numbers because I, I know that you guys are positive and you're going to pick up on the reduction in traffic some of this. There's a substantial drop from 14 to 15 to 16. I'll be straight with you on that. That's me. That's my call. I have a different vision than I had five, eight years ago. Our communities are changing. Our world's changing. We have to adapt in law enforcement to be better. Granted, there are people that need some of this. That's our job. We need to run radar. We need to be out in the community. There are tickets that need to be written. But my direction and vision has changed and my direction to our staff and especially supervisors. Yes, I want some radar work. I want you to write a ticket, but I want you out of this community. I want you in our schools, in our walk-throughs during the day. I want you in our shopping district. I want you to be visible. So, I think that's worked and I think the crime prevention approach in our community, in our society, is what we need to make a change. But, we'll still write some of this. Need some of it. Calls received for police, fire and rescue. You see those numbers for the three-year period? Yes, sir.
The total traffic, does that include any accidents?
Yes, that's total traffic summonses and.
Oh, that's okay. All right, that's accidents in there too.
Well, if there's a summons issue during the accident, then that number's there.
Okay.
Not if there's, no summons issue, it's not.
Those summons, okay, okay.
That's a reduction of about a third over a two-year period.
Correct.
Good. Good explanation.
Total mileage, I want to bring total mileage up because before counsel, we had had these discussions over the past five years about take-home vehicles. And I think you'll see through the attrition of our take-home vehicle program that we're reducing the number of mileage, mileage that we are putting home vehicles in a year's period. So, I know we had some very vivid discussion over take-home vehicles and we created a policy in 2012. I think that policy is working and I think we're seeing progress in that respect. Commendations and appreciation. The one thing that I, you guys know me, probably get stuff from me, I'm very passionate about how, how we represent and how I commend and appreciate our folks doing the job. The job that they're doing on the street today, it's different. It's different than it's ever been. I don't know that I could do the street job that they're doing today. The world's changing. We have some of the finest men and women in this state doing the job. So, as a police administrator, it's my responsibility. When they're doing the job the right way, I need to commend them. So, very often, I issue letters of commendations, letters of appreciation, and you'll see those numbers have increased over the past couple of years. My job is to try to motivate these guys in a climate that is not easy on a police officer. So, that's some of the things I'm proud to do. Also, you guys will notice, this is on our website. This is something that Mr. Sherwulf brought up a couple of years ago. It's our internal investigations. We're keeping statistics on the internal investigations that we do, we're posting those on our website. Three types of investigations that we do. Internal affairs, personal complaints and inquiries. Personnel complaints, simply, an officer stopped me and he was rude to me. That's a personnel complaint. An internal investigation, use of force issue, violation of constitutional rights, those are major issues that we have to investigate. Inquiries, inquiries would be a situation where a citizen called me, gave me vague information, give me information, I needed more information. So, I will personally do an inquiry to see if we needed to do an internal investigation or a personnel complaint. So, there is a good description of that process in your book. If you would like to read that, it'll explain every category, what we're doing. That's another part that I feel very strong about and how we are transparent with our community. Our community needs to know that if I would complain, that that complaint is handled correctly with integrity. with integrity, and that's, before council, I'll tell you, that's my job. That's one of the biggest parts of my job as a police chief, is to handle complaints as they come in, make sure they're managed correctly, and handle them effectively. Okay, another new piece of information that you will see is demographic information. Most of the council members know I'm very passionate about race relations in our community. I'm very active in that. I know it's the right thing to do. My statement's always been, Mr. Michael Tom and I are on numerous commissions together, and he's probably tired of hearing me say this, but I'll say it. We're gonna have, every community's gonna have trouble, whether it's race, whatever it is. Communities are gonna have trouble. We know that. It's the world we live in. In order to get through those times, we have to have relationships built. And that's what we're trying to do in our race relationship dialogues. And Mr. Tom's very familiar with this. Many states across our nation are mandating traffic stop demographic data. Numerous states are mandated by federal law to submit that before they can receive state or federal funding. Virginia's not one of those. Myself, Blacksburg Police, Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, to my knowledge, are the only ones in the state of Virginia that are producing this data and have it available to our citizens or whoever wants to see it. Because that's, again, that's where our citizens want is transparency. So you'll see, we started collecting this data December 7, 2015. We're tracking vehicle stops by sex, by race, by origin, by residential status, vehicle search, vehicle searched by race, and summons by race. Those are the items that we're tracking every day. And I will continue to do that because I think it's the right thing to do, and I want it to be public data so our citizens can see that, council, and have open discussion about how we handle our police operation. These are just a few graphs. One piece of information from the last census, the town of Christiansburg is 6.2 African-American and 89.6 percent white. So that's a comparison of the numbers, vehicles per stop, white, black, Asian, and American Indian, and searched vehicles by race. And those graphs are also in your information. Vehicle stops by sex, which I still, more males than females stop, you know, that's what. I'm agreeing with you.
We're taking on.
My side is, can I?
We're taking on the chin anymore.
Summones issued by race, that information's there. I wanted you to know that that is new information in our annual report. And I'm very passionate about that because we're the lead edge in Virginia. In my estimation, within five years, it'll be a federal mandate, and we'll be five years ahead of that. We talked about crime reduction. We talked about the things that we're doing very well. The crime reduction, in my opinion, is without a strong crime prevention unit and a strong vision from a command staff that knows what we have to do to get that done. And it's that we have to be out in the community, and we have to build those relationships, which we're doing. Crime prevention unit's very busy. That's just some of the numbers that you'll see in your annual report. There's two people in crime prevention, Sergeant Townley and Nathan Dell. That's our two crime prevention officers. They do receive help from ordnance and dare when they have time. If you really dig into the numbers of what they're doing, it's pretty amazing. I'm not sure how they do so much in a year's period, but they're diligent, they work hard, and they're very committed to the job. Not just events, our crime prevention unit, you'll see them out here every event. They're there working. But we do a lot of things the public is not aware of, and council may not be aware of. We do bank robbery trainings, bicycle rodeos, safety talks, personal safety training, church security trainings. We have two, three members in our crime prevention unit that are CEPED certified. They can come to your residence, to your business, and they can do an analysis, security analysis, and provide a report for you. We've done it for numerous churches. We've done it for numerous businesses, and we've done it for numerous residents in residential neighborhoods. We've done gun safety training, identity theft classes, workplace safety trainings, and business security assessments. Real quick, narcotics investigation. We're very proactive in this area. Obviously, we know we had many meth labs, especially the two years prior, and the one year we had twenty-seven meth labs in the town of Christiansburg. We have two people assigned to our narcotic unit in Christiansburg, one to the State Drug Task Force, and one to the DEA Drug Task Force to try to combat these things in our community. Last year, seven methamphetamine labs. Not happy with that, but it's better than what we've had in previous years. So our guys are working really hard to push off of that, and there's a lot of that in our community, and we're working hard to get it out.
It's getting tougher and tougher. Don't they have a lot of mobile meth labs right now? It's hard to chase down?
Ninety percent of the meth labs that we deal with will be mobile labs. Very seldom will you find a stationary lab in a residence. One DMT lab, and just real quickly, a DMT lab, it's set up like a methamphetamine lab, but they're making hallucinants. And you see that a lot on college campuses. They're starting to come into our community a little. I think Virginia Tech and Rappaher's had more than we have, but that's something that's on our radar. We're working hard to try to combat that. Fourteen home visits with child protective services, ninety-seven controlled purchases by our drug unit last year, one hundred and thirteen controlled purchase assists, and that's when we helped Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, Blacksburg, and our task forces. Thirty-seven search warrants, ninety search warrant assists, six vehicle sees, two postal interdictions. We do that a lot with our canines. We run the postal service. We run FedEx. If they're coming through the conveyor or our dogs are there, there's a lot of things shipped in our US mail and in FedEx into our community, so that's something we're trying to combat with our canine unit. Those units worked four hundred and nineteen hours of surveillance last year, three hundred and thirty-four hours of interdiction, so they're a busy unit, working very hard. Grants. We'll speak briefly about grants. We're always talking about in tough fiscal times. We're trying to pick up money. We're trying to save municipality money. I want to point out one that we're very proud of, and that's the $453,000 grant, and that's a partnership with the Mental Health Association. The town of Christiansburg has agreed to be the fiscal agent for that money, for how I'm sorry. She's still mad at me over that one. No, she's done a great job, and I appreciate your help with that. So we've used that money in the New River Valley, all the way out into Giles, to purchase less lethal weapons. So that's a great thing for our law enforcement agencies and also our partners in the New River Valley. We've also used that to train more officers in CIP training to better be able to deal with mental health patients. So that's a good grant. It's been very good for us. Overtime, I put this in because it always comes up during the budget process. You know, we have a pretty hefty overtime budget each year, and that number looks big. It's important for me to let you know that eighty-two thousand of that annual budget is reimbursed back to the municipality. And simply, our officers work for outside vendors. We pay them, the money comes back in through the town of Christiansburg. Ordnance and dare. To speak briefly about ordinance and dare. They're working hard. There are dare programs. Ordinance, we work with our planning department in our ordinance program. They've done three hundred and four ordinance complaints last year. Alarm entries. A couple of years ago, we implemented alarm ordinance. That's one of us ordinance officer's job. When the alarm comes in, you track those and build those.
Have those reduced since we've put the funds?
Absolutely.
Have they?
It's always expensive.
It's okay. Okay.
In my next presentation, I'm gonna provide some numbers on that.
Okay, thank you.
Two hundred and twelve SRO hours. A lot of times, we, two SROs in the high school and middle school, if they're away on assignment or in training, our ordinance officer fills in and helps in that situation. Twenty-four court hours and one hundred and forty-eight frame hours. They also help in our patrol function. We talked about that when we were, talked about a new position this past year, that our elementary SRO can fill some gaps during summer time. And he does do that. Two hundred and nineteen patrol duties, four incident reports that he took, sixty-nine unlocked cars, and he helps a lot in the several fingerprints inside the police department. Strategic planning. This is my last couple of slides. I want to brief you guys, the last council meeting in September, on our strategic plans. So we'll be brief on this. I'm excited about bringing our strategic plan to you and to our community, to be very open about that and talk about how we strategically plan within our organization. But just some of the successes that you'll find in this year's annual report. Under public education, we have successfully completed free police academies this past year, senior team and citizen, and we have conducted a citizen and business survey in 2015. Under training, we had a multi-agency field training exercise at the Reptile Armory Ammunition Plant where we combined our emergency tactical team and our Homeland Security Program, which is a very, very effective training program. Lieutenant Tim Brown and Donna Apers both received their master assessment certification, and we were recertified as a state law enforcement agency this past year. Staffing is always a high priority objective, and we'll talk about that in my next presentation. Leadership and management, we completed our organizational effective assessment this past year. Each officer, street line officer, received combat first aid training, and all of our sergeants and lieutenants now have been trained in ILCT and HEL, which are two leadership programs through the Chiefs Association. We've worked diligently over the past five years to get our leadership through those leadership programs. Public safety, an elementary SRO was added, thanks to council for that. Homeland Security Officer receives some training in intruder, armed intruder training, which he is delivering as a school program this year. And lastly, resource management, our department renovation, which is complete, elevator online this week, so I need to get a tour for you guys before council meeting. It's a good facility, and it was a long road to get there, but I do appreciate your support on that. So with that, questions?
Chief, we, I'm trying to remember, a couple of years back, was there an additional detective position created? Were there some additional detective power maybe within the last three to five years?
I've asked.
That's not, that has not been improved yet.
You have a little more.
Can you, can you give us some, I was looking for some of the numbers, and a lot of the numbers have went down, but I've noticed that detectives being involved in certain, I guess certain involvements that they have, and actually things went up. Are they, is it more efficient, or have the facilities gotten better? I know that this one thing you've always wanted was, frankly, some better facilities there, where you used to have a lot of people in one room or two people in one room to give them some opportunity, but they're not working on top of one another. Has that assisted you quite a bit?
Absolutely.
Or assisted them, I should say?
We're a month into that new operation, so we're filling that out, but it has been nice, and I think it's been very productive for us.
And the other thing I want to ask you was, actually, I'll wait for that strategic plan when we get it in late September, but the, as far as the detective position, though, again, that, you now have the room at the new facility where you can actually, it comes up to courthouse, you can expand now and have room to expand within your current facility, correct? And third floor's up and running completely?
Up and running.
It did. Thank you.
I'm glad Mr. Biggs had you here this evening, because this is very interesting. And it's a good marketing pre-department, too, to let us know what's going on. It's impressive. Great presentation.
Go ahead, Steve. I just wanted to make a comment about how, I just read this on the emails, but how it appears that you have handled a Starlight movie situation, and it looks to me, from what I've read, that everybody is somewhat pleased with the changes that have been made, and, you know, I think that's a, a lot of times, we just think about the police force of stopping the bad guy, but in this case, you know, it seems like that you work with the community and you work with the Starlight people and it worked out well. I think that speaks well for our police department.
Chief, I'd like to, I want to ask you one more question. The strategic plan you're gonna bring to us in late September, your strategic plan, and I know you and I, I think we're on the same page in this. Right now, our SRO, I'm a big believer in the SRO program, not personally, but we have an SRO that serves our Chrismer primary, our Chrismer Elementary, and our fallen branch that does the rotation. Is that correct?
That's right.
And it can be utilized outside of that during the summer months and all. If I may ask you, and I don't want to, I don't want to take away any thunder at all, but is that something you see strategically that was gonna benefit the town of Chrismer when we have a staffed SRO inside of every school, a uniformed Chrismer Police Department officer?
Talking about the other two elementary schools?
Yes, sir.
If that is not currently a strategic plan, I'm not saying it will not be there.
Okay.
We actually have the command staff need in two weeks to go over the past year's activities and to push forward for next year.
I've noticed that that's been an initiative, it seems like, from Sheriff Parton. He also appreciates and sees the tangible and intangible benefits of the SRO program. Is that someone that you, that you feel like is on the same page as far as our, I guess, our shared belief about the SRO program?
I think we are.
Okay. Thank you.
I will mention one thing, and Mark did not tell me this to be bragging rights, but the situation at the Starlight this weekend, Mark was there personally, one o'clock in the morning, in the two neighborhoods that were concerned, at one o'clock in the morning, listening to the soundings. So it's not like he just sent somebody out to take a look. Mark was proactive, and that was after running a softball tournament on, no, that was the day of running a softball tournament for two days with the fallen officer. So he took an active part, and he has met the complotants and the people at Starlight. He has met with them constantly, and I appreciate that. I mean, that's, I thought that was quite impressive that you would take that on yourself at eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning to, I think you told me you stood in one of them's backyard at one o'clock in the morning. Hopefully, he knew you were there.
I knew I'd answered questions on this one, so I knew I needed to go first and ask you what was going on.
Anything else from Mark? Chief, thank you very much. We look forward to the next presentation. Very good. We're into the discussion by mayor and council members, and the first thing on our agenda is the reappointment of Ann Carter to the planning commission. Ann's term will expire August 31st of 2016. She has been a long, and she's president, she has been a long and dedicated participant of the planning commission, and so, Ms. Ann, thank you.
Oh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve.
And that is a.
If you vote me right.
That's right.
That is a, is that a four-year term, two-year, four-year? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, it'd be my pleasure to recommend a reappointment of Ms. Carter to the planning commission for an additional four-year term.
I second it.
Got a motion in the second. Any further discussion or comments?
Well, I would just like to say that I think there are very few people in the town of Christiansburg that know more about the town of Christiansburg than Ann does. And she is certainly a knowledgeable person to have on the planning.
And I want the planning commissioner with her right now as well, and her experience is invaluable.
And she's a watchdog. Not a dog, but a watchdog. And our planning commission, even with the, I've said it before, but when council, or when our planning commission is unanimous on almost anything, it makes our job so much easier, and because you're not a rubber stamp, never have been a rubber stamp person, and we, I personally appreciate you being a good gatekeeper on the requests that come before us.
I'd like to thank you too, Ann, for the council over the years. She was on the council too, for over a year, so I just appreciate your service to your job.
I'm gonna start questioning the sanity, though, with the one that you're asking.
Talk to you about something you love.
That's exactly right.
And I think that's, that's what we see with Ann. I have a motion in the second. Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilwoman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Harper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shaw?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye. Six, I thank you, and again, Ann, thank you so much for your service, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. It's always been a mistake.
The second on the agenda is award of the bid for Park Street Sidewalk Improvements Extension Project Phase Two. Mr. Biggs?
Mayor, members of council, you had concluded in your agenda packet a letter of recommendation of award and a certified bid tabulation for the Park Street Sidewalk Improvement Project. This is a project that we've been working on for quite some time. We had a bid opening on August 5th. We had a low bidder that was qualified, Yeldy Enterprises had a base bid of $890,000. What I'd like to report to you about the status of the project is that we do have all of our easements in place. However, we are waiting in agreement with Norfolk Southern for rail crossing. We would like to go ahead and award or authorize to award bid, seek your authorization to award bid in advance of getting that Norfolk Southern agreement. We will lose these bids as of October the 4th. We'll continue to work with Norfolk Southern to get that agreement. If by chance, in the construction process, we do not have that agreement in time, that what we would do would be a deduct from this particular contract with the intention of completing the work at the appropriate time. So we would not abandon that scope of work, but we think that we do need to move forward in a timely fashion with the, with the project, and so we don't want that one last administrative item to hold up to be a little bit. We would seek your approval to award bid in the amount of $890,000 with a 5% construction contingency included.
Is that, Mr. Biggs, is it 890, is that funding completely covered by DHCD funds?
It's a combination of funds. We have several different funds.
Okay, okay, because we're only getting like a hundred and some thousand dollars a year from DHCD.
Right.
So that's my question. So it is, it is a variety of funds.
There are more crystals as well.
But not any of our general funds in it, or?
I don't recall if there are general funds in this.
Okay.
Little bit.
A little bit, small, but it's a big project. I'm glad to see it. Okay, thanks. I make a motion that we award the bid to town manager's recommendation as presented to us. to us.
I second.
Got a motion in the second. Further discussion?
This was also the Anderson Associates that we had hired to review this as well, this was their recommendation also, correct? They felt like everything was properly vetted in the bid.
Yes. Very good, very good. If there's no other comments or questions, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye.
That would be six oh, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Bates, in engineering and all those involved in the, the procuring the bids.
Can I ask one question about the, Mr. Biggs, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Now that we, we've agreed to award that, and I understand Norfolk Southern, we got, we have to finish that portion out, of course, but any estimated project start date that we would have on that?
What we'll do is we'll get through the notice of award process and then the, um, compiling of the contract documents and receipt of necessary bond. Typically takes at least four weeks to, to work through from the notice of award to get the contract executed, and often there's only work in the two, four week mobilization period, so I would say six to eight weeks.
That, that, that sounds quick to me, so we're, we're breaking ground six to eight weeks.
I would hope they mobilize within six to eight weeks.
Fantastic, thank you.
Next is a proposed lease agreement for location of communication facility and water storage tanks, and I believe we have a master lease agreement, is it?
You had at your seats this evening a draft agreement, we considered to be about the ninety-five percent point in the process. The historic background on this particular item is that we have worked with a local wireless provider in the past on essentially a regular basis as a trade-out for services, and they have located devices on our existing elevated water storage tanks. That company is now going through a transition and it's time for us to formalize that relationship. And so what we have prepared and intend to, to recommend for approval at the appropriate time is an agreement that would formalize the lease of our space on our tanks for that provider. We're presenting it to you this evening because the company is going to be under kind of a hard deadline of October the 1st, so we would need to schedule a public hearing for this item in September, but we didn't want to wait until the public hearing in, in order to introduce this to you in case you do have any questions or concerns about it, we have plenty of time to work those out in advance of the article first deadline.
This is a joint effort, and I'm under the assumption, obviously, that it's with town staff and the attorney?
That's correct. With the IT and town attorney and myself with your provider to get this done.
So there's going to be a public hearing, so we don't need to take any action tonight?
No reason for action tonight, we just wanted to give an early introduction of the item for you, so that it is removed from the public hearing process and can formalize this. If there were any concerns, we would have time to work this out.
Have we already set the public hearing?
That's great.
Probably a little later on.
Right for you.
All right. Thank you. Item three A is the amendment to the chapter forty-two zoning of the town of Christiansburg. We have been, there is, seems to be desires or annulances from the council that they would like to go ahead and approve this tonight. I will open it for a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed amendment to chapter forty-two of the zoning ordinance as presented by Mr. Warren and in our agenda packet. It was unanimously approved by the, uh, the planning commission and seen a reason why we shouldn't leave it, has a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion, second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say one thing, Mr. Warren and Mr. Biggs and town, we're already doing the things that we're now codifying, so I guess it's usually one would follow the other, but in this particular case, it's nice enough we're simply adopting state language to, as a basis of resolution really, resolute to show that, you know, we're going to follow that lead, but frankly, it seems like everything's turned around a little bit. Speaks well for the town, I appreciate the leadership.
Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye.
That would be six oh, thank you very much.
Item number four is Councilman Stiles and Councilman Collins, street committee recommendation report on boundary line relocation plat from Brian Rice at four sixty-five Underwood Street Northwest, relocating lot lines and building lots A, B, and C. So that's why you're here, Mark, I don't know what we're going, oh, we can talk about these.
Straightforward request before this evening, straightforward request before this evening at the corner of Winsong Lane and Underwood Street, there are presently four sort of oddly shaped parcels there that are being requested to be reconfigured into three more logical lots, more developable, and all three lots, we intend is to develop single-family, single-family dwelling on them. It is zoned R3, could be built up a lot more denser than it was being proposed, and simply put, this tidies up the lot configurations, and in our opinion, street committee's recommendation, or the street committee's opinion, tidies up the neighborhood as well. It is not a part of the Winsong development, it is directly adjacent to it, and from what we understand, it's going to be similar type development. And the subdivision plat as presented conforms with our ordinance, and the street committee sees no reason not to approve it as presented, and I'll make that recommendation form a motion.
I second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion, questions, comments?
I have been up there several times, obviously, I go up there quite often, and there's a lot of green space there, and it's a, it's a good location for new housing, and I think if anything, it would, that's somewhat improving.
It's going to be more than that.
Yes, sir. Uh-huh, so I, I would think it's a, a good move. And, and Brian Rice, he makes sure, he, he was doing good work with new homes, and, and I think that, that's another plus.
I will say that I have had numerous conversations with people who have purchased up there and live up there and the existing, and they're all extremely pleased with the results and the neighborhood and the quality of the buildings, so Brian, thank you for that. Good other comments, questions? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye.
That would be six oh, thank you. Next on the agenda, Mr. Washington, we're going to request a closed meeting.
Pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one nine A seven, I moved that the town council go into closed session for the purpose of receiving a briefing by the town manager and consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, specifically concerning a notice of claim received by the town dated August 5th, 2016, where such briefing and consultation is conducted in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating, negotiating or litigating posture of the town.
That's a form of a motion.
Form of a motion.
Second. All right. Any questions, Madam Clark, let's roll along, can I ask questions to get into closed session?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye. That is six oh, we're going to take about a three, four minute break so we can clear council members.
Closed meeting, in the best of each member's knowledge, discuss only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting.
Step second.
Second.
Motion in the second. Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye.
Thank you, that is six oh, we are now out of closed session, we have certified that we discussed on the, the subject involved in this, this request, and the council will take no, no action on this matter at this point. Council reports, Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir, I was going to give a report on, on engineering department and what a great job they did, but since he's not here, all the way through knows I want that. However, I think that, and this is just my opinion, Montgomery County sends a planning commission person to the, our planning commission meeting, and the supervisors, there's a lot of information being shared when they meet now, I think it's something for us to look at, to send a representative to the supervisor meetings, each meeting they have. I'm not volunteering, I just say it, you know.
Oh, no, 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 no. Do you agree with you two, with the board?
No, no, I, I fit this one out.
We ought to have a motion in the second, why not? I, I think we need to discuss this a little bit further.
Yeah.
And I'm unclear, are you having, you said they're going, they're, we should send a representative to their, for supervisor meeting or the planning commission?
Supervisor meeting, I'm sorry, I, I just give an example, if they do send somebody to our planning commission meetings, each meeting they have a representative there.
That's not a good one.
Well, yes, you can, yeah.
We won't let you say that either. All right, thank you.
Just an idea, you know, I mean, you know, to get information that, you know, that we wouldn't get in a quick manner.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, just coming, I think it says Thursday, I would be attending the tourism committee meeting at the government center.
Mr. Hall?
Couple of things, first off, just to remind everybody that this Saturday, we have Heritage Days, and we have the Gospel Sing, Heritage Days in the, in the morning noon time hour, and the Gospel Sing that evening, and I hope everybody can come out, both of those should be well attended, I would hope, by not only Chrismer citizens but throughout the area. I want to thank my fellow council members that were able to attend the school board, I'm sorry, the school board meeting. It was informative, it was enlightening to, to listen to the, the presentations and the, and be able to have access to our school board members, and have a chance for some of us to be acquainted with Dr. Meyer, and I thought that was invaluable, and I think that he'll, again, prove, provide a resource going forward. I think we, we're very fortunate to have a school superintendent like him. I want to mention that, Mr. Harper, I wish you would do this, because I thought this is more your thing than me, but I'm going to mention it, since you asked me to, but as a, just a reminder to everybody, the eight mile walk, so on September 10th, registration deadline is Monday, September 5th, you'll have to be there by, I think it's, you check in eight AM, you have to be there by eight fifteen to late to get the ride over, and you'll go from the Blasberg area back towards the recreation center, I believe, Mr. Harper. And there's room left, but I know room also, there's been quite a few, is it forty-plus people, around forty people that have signed up thus far?
Yes, sir.
I believe so, so there's, there's room left, but I, I hope that, that everybody can attend that. I also told the town manager and the council and the mayor last time that I would let you all know the exact placement of the, the player equipment that we were able to win, and I will tell you, I've spoken with Mr. Epple recently about that, and I cannot tell you tonight because of one thing, because there was two individuals who, citizens that spoke out and wanted, and asked some questions to us. Mr. Epple is calling both of them tomorrow, this is what he decided he wanted to do, he's going to invite both into our next meeting, which will be held on September 6th at the recreation commission, to gauge, engage them and get their opinions as to the property placements. I rightfully, they both live across the street from each other, close to the wayside area, which is one of the two placements we've looked at for the property, so we want to hear from them, the citizens, before we make any formal decision, but I believe that we should be able to tell you something about the first meeting in September. In addition to that, Mr. Epple has already requested a footprint analysis for both locations for that particular, the, for the actual parent equipment to be installed, so we can have better understanding as to what the size would be once it's in, and he's also got, I believe, Mr. Bates, an extension on the, in the, it has, we're supposed to have to be in by, I think, the end of September, because he has an extension on that to give us a little more leeway, so we're not like we're up against the wall to make a snap decision or anything, so everything is well on its way in that regard.
Would, would it reverse that item, would you like that as a listed item on the September deadline?
I think so, I, I, yeah, yes, sir, I believe, believe so, and we've moved the, I think on September, what, 13th, is that the first meeting in September?
Yes, that's right.
September 6th, we have a recreation commission for everybody, it's on the first Monday of the month, we've moved it to the, to the Tuesday because in accordance of Labor Day, and if any members that would, citizenry or the town that would like to be there, please feel free to come out, it's at the recreation center at six o'clock in the evening on that Tuesday. But I will have a report, Mr. Town Manager.
On the Tuesday?
We're moving it to Tuesday this, for September.
Oh, the day later, okay, good.
Right, and, but I will have a report on 13th for town council and for, and for the town manager. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Stiles?
One item, I would, with BML coming up and us all planning to attend, I would ask that Mr. Biggs and Mr. Mayor Barber maybe look at the agenda down there and pick out a couple hours. It's sort of compressed this year, but I'd like to suggest maybe a couple hours that you all pick out that we can, we can talk about, you know, Mr. Biggs has made some first impressions on us, and I'd like to hear his thoughts, so we can talk about some of the things that maybe he has in mind for the future a little bit, and maybe a couple of, a couple hours to just dialogue, because the whole, the whole weekend is advertised for us as a meeting, so if we could pick out an hour or two, I'm just suggesting that an hour or two that we could talk.
We had discussed it, I've discussed it, it is, trying to find what.
And not come by the dinner or something, but some, some chunk of time that we can shoot it together and.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw.
Just wanted to, I'll put a little bit more on our visit to the school board meeting the other night, I believe Falling Branch is slated to get an addition on there, accommodate more students. They are, it was, you know, a lot of our citizenry were there, and the school board members did appreciate us being there, along with Dr. Meyer, I think it was good relationship builder, we found out a lot about the school system and the direction they're going. I believe Chris Tuck was there too, from the board supervisors, and one other board supervisor.
Mary Biggs.
That's right, so.
That's right.
It's exciting to hear that, and they're excited about working with us too on certain initiatives, or at least creating some sort of open dialogue.
That's right.
Because I think we all recognize when a lot of people move into the area, and this was Dr. Meyer said, what's one of the first things coupled us, they go to the school to take a look at it. So it says a lot about your community, and he is aware of our community, which no lot made when we were having our discussions. The second item, we're returning, I would believe, from our summer hiatus from the regional commission, so it'll be myself this Thursday, Mr. Collins, and Mr. Hill Johnson, the, our two new members, and I believe you already had your orientation.
We did.
How did that go?
The past week went great.
I meant to ask you about that earlier.
Yeah.
But I'm excited to have them there and be part of the regional commission.
We are too, to be honest with you, they're good people, they're a lot.
Must, must get a full vote now.
Well, yeah.
Any other things?
Nope, that's it.
Mr. Harper?
I would just like to second Brad's comment there about having a meeting for BML, and I think in the past we've done it, it's Sunday nights, and if you do it Sunday night, you know, you can go as long as you want or as short as you want. I also want to make it, the planning commission's come up a couple times tonight, and I just wanted to mention Craig Moore, he does a, if you haven't seen the planning commission in action, Craig does just a wonderful job. And I also wanted to second what, what Cor said about Heritage Day, and that goes off from ten to three, and they're going to have a silent auction, and Mike's wife has done 10 to 3, and they're going to have a silent auction, and Mike's wife has done some great work in there, they have 70 items in there, and it's super, and then the highlight of the day is Steve is going to be one of the pie judging contests.
That's right.
Did that happen around 12 o'clock?
That's right.
Yeah, so you can see he has gotten another very deep responsibility, he's been an impressionist.
That's because the mayor has not recovered from doing it last year, but my sugar level is still elevated after a year.
All right, and now, as you recall, a couple of weeks ago, the Summit Committee had a report, and about how we having, we voted on new finances and how we're charged, and since that time, they have sold two niches in the Calderon, two double niches, and they have sold four plots that are right around the Calderon, so they're doing very well there. And I just want to also say the pool has been closed, you know, for the rain this season, and it will be reopening on Saturday. And that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hopper said about Craig Moore, the chairperson Craig Moore, and I just wanted to make everybody aware, if you haven't, the minutes of the July 18th meeting for the planning commission, this stood out to me and resonated with me, and I think a lot of Craig, but if you look at the very bottom page file, I didn't note that when I was wanting to do minutes, it says Chairperson Moore noted public participation is often low at planning commission meetings, but reminded the commissioners they represent the interest of the citizens whether or not they attend the meetings. I think it's very well said, and that just simply speaks to the leadership that he brings to the planning commission and our planning commission and the whole, I meant to mention that, and personally, I think that just speaks very highly of him and the commission. Thank you.
And Harry, if you would, translate that onto him.
I will.
Okay.
I will, thank you, sir. And I'd like to say one more thing to get you to, oh, my, Mr. Hall, he's coach, he's a coach of a girls softball team, and he does this a lot, and he was in the paper this week for, what did y'all win?
We won a championship down in North Carolina.
The championship, that's right.
I didn't win anything in the girls, so you may be looking.
Good job, good job.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
I only have a couple of things, I think we have set the date, or setting the date, or understand, the date for the Christmas parade is the second Friday in December, is it somewhere along that line, I believe. Anyway, we are beginning to work on the Christmas parade, and have not had any formal meetings, I promised Steve, before I did anything, I'd let you know what we were going to do. Erlene reminds me that Henry has promised her more lights this year, so I'm just calling it to you. So we're getting ready to get started, and there's some ideas that she slash I would like to see as considered, new to the parade, and be like, maybe having about a 30-minute session with one of the quiners in town, or the core apartment, about, you know, standing around the middle of the street singing the Christmas carols, the prayer is right too, and Erlene wants to hook up some vendors and come up and down the sidewalks, selling hot chocolate and coffee. Now, it's 80, if it's 80 degrees like it was last year, we'd be selling cokes, but that's, that's the one thing, and I will report back to you and notify those of you that have an interest as we get started. I wanted to let Charlton and Brad and the guys get through this weekend, the museum and the gospel sing, and then we'll sit down and proceed with that a little bit more.
I want to mention something about that, and the only reason I would say this is because you brought up the, I didn't think I was going to come up the night at all about the Christmas parade, but I did. I don't take, I don't do a lot in Giles anymore, but I was down there this past week, and a lady that knows you very well, Mayor, and I firmly can't remember her name, I know her very well too, but I'm drawing a blank, but she just made an appointment to me, asked me when the Christmas parade is going to be, and I thought, we're here in August, I don't know when the Christmas parade is going to be, we've not been talking about that for a while, here we are talking about it on Tuesday, and, but my point, she, she asked, she doesn't live in Christiansburg, she said she came to one last year and couldn't believe it, it was blown away, and then she went to her, Michael mentioned where she lives, she went to her home, they went to the one there, and she said, I'm just looking forward to come back to Christiansburg this year. So maybe it's best I don't, I can't remember her last name right now, I'll leave that alone, but spoke volumes about how nice our parade was last year, and well attended.
I think so.
Of course, that's a heated breeze too.
Well, and I think, Sarah, you're already working on a Christmas.
I've got vendors lined up already, they're requesting to be already on the list, I'm like, no, let's, let's get the list made before we actually put you on the list.
Yeah, but I do believe, and I talked, last year, we, there was a, a little bit of a conflict in parking places with the, you know, the Christmas store being in session, and I spoke to George Jackson this morning, and he said that, and I think we, I want to say the ninth, but don't hold me to it, he said that day, they're going to do a short day, so they're, they're only going to operate the Christmas store until about 4:00, to give their volunteers and people time to clear out, which would open up some more parking places, because there were very few parking places and the largest crowd we've ever had, so hopefully that's going, that's going to work out. And that's basically all I have. Mr. Biggs?
Few matters to report on, one is to confirm with the council that the solid waste study RFP will advertise this Sunday, August 28th, and we will have a due date for those proposals on September 22nd. The, several members of the management team sat in on a webinar today on the possibility of municipalities tagging on to the state health plan. As you know, group health insurance is a major issue and a major expense for us, and there was some legislation that was passed in the last session that enabled the possibility of us not literally being a member of the state health plan, but there would be a separate but somewhat mirrored system that would become available. We'll probably be coming to you to get authorization to express preliminary interest in participating in that, the deadline for that is October 14th. That expression of interest is non-binding at this point, but we just want to, we might be aware that that is something that we're pursuing. It looks attractive potentially in terms of cost savings, and the unfortunate part of it is that it would not be available to us until 2018, and we're really hoping to make some adjustments to our group health insurance plan leading into next fiscal year, but this will not be the solution to that, so we'll be looking at other alternatives potentially for dealing with our very high insurance costs. In relation to VML that has already been mentioned, I wanted to remind you that you have received your confirmations, and to please look at those and make sure that they're in order, and if you have any questions about your confirmation, please speak with me. Final couple of things, just to schedule two public hearings, September 27th, first one would be on the master lease agreement that we spoke to earlier this evening, the second would be on the amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion in second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilman Schellwarter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
Aye. Is that the 24th, the earliest we can have that, that public hearing and vote on the contract?
We can have it at the second meeting, I forget exactly why we, excuse me, on the first meeting, I forget exactly why we settled with them on having it the second meeting, and I didn't want to change that.
We're waiting for the state specific addenda.
That's what it was.
From the, from them.
Okay, I know you said they were going to be under the wire to sign something about October 1, but this would still.
Brian, we are requiring them as part of the lease, thank you, and to provide to us some specific information about how their facilities are laid out, in terms of location, attachment, means, and the type of facility and that kind of thing, and we didn't want to hold a public hearing before we had that.
Is there a deadline for them to provide that information to you all?
We did set a deadline, and I think it was.
About Friday, the first week of September?
Yes.
Would that give you enough time for us to have the public meeting on the first meeting of September? That way, in case there's any kinks, you all have time to go to work anything out, or, I hate to jump against the wall on 27th.
I'm trying to have it, so that really by the 27th, we're really paying for the numbers, so, rather than have something missing on the, the, or.
They were fine with that.
Okay. Mike? Yes, sir.
I forgot to mention here too, I mentioned this before about Bill Beecher, who is, controls the competitive part of the pool, you know, he's retiring, and they're going to have a little, little thing for him this Sunday, on the 28th from 5 to 7 at the pool, and it'd be good if he just go by and stop by and shake his hand, he has done a lot, you know, to bring a revenue to the pool.
Would you all be comfortable with some type of a resolution, a proclamation, on what he's done, if I can get that together?
Absolutely, that'd be great.
Okay. I may do it, I may do it in the form of a proclamation, because otherwise I'd have to get all of you to vote on it prior to, so we'll, we'll do that. Listen, did you take that down? Did you get that? Okay, thank you.
I have one more question, please.
Yes, sir.
Any update on the marketplace that you've given anybody yet, has that guy come up or?
There is, I was contacted a couple of weeks ago by Dr. Scott, the chairman, and she says that they would like to, the owner and the property manager or all, one of the officials is, wants to come into town the latter, in the latter weeks of September or the mid to early weeks of October, and has requested a meeting with Mr. Biggs and myself and the chamber board and those kind of things. I think, I think he's, I think there's a fear factor if the whole council gangs up on him, but he'd like to make the initial steps, and I think he's got some, some ideas.
Okay, there's dialogue.
Yeah, there is dialogue with him, and it's cheaper than going to, yeah. Not as nice as going to Ball Park.
Brave to beat the schedule, sir.
That's true. Any, yes, sir?
One correction, I had a misunderstanding from Mr. Warren's presentation earlier on, he said to the second meeting, I heard that to be the second meeting of September for the public hearing on the amendment to the comp plan, and he just corrected me, and what we will need for the public hearing on the amendment to the comp plan will be the October 25th.
So we need to reset that public hearing?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to rescind my motion to set the public hearing for that item on September 27th.
Second. Okay. Motion in second to rescind. Madam Clerk, you want? And Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilman Schellwarter?
Aye.
Councilman Stiles?
It will be 6:00. Is there a new motion somewhere around 20?
We can do that now, or if planning is down, we can, we can do that at future meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else?
I want to mention one thing, then we're done. Mr. Biggs, town staff, if I'm in the rec center, or if I'm just around town, or whatnot, I've seen some of the store, of course, very close, any members that work in town, your efforts have not gone unnoticed as far as engaging individually and with those groups, from the police department on down, everyone. All I've heard is how frankly complimentary, not that that's what you're looking for, you're doing a job, I get that, but they feel like that they have a voice, and they feel like